For me also, when you send out the email or what's on Facebook, if you were able, if that was actual, an actual live link, kind of like on this same email, where it was a live link to see the full agenda. If it was a live link that you could press and then register. But I agree, registering is very important. If it was a live link, you could just register from there. And it's the same in the email. If you could just register on a link. And then my other comment was just to Andy's point. A lot of people, I think, that attend the meetings, they're kind of afraid of this kind of technology. They don't use it on a daily basis and a little nervous about it and don't realize how easy it is. If maybe there's, you know, that you put something in there that if, I understand you all are super busy. But if there's somebody there that could either like explain ahead of time or you just set up maybe on one evening, like little tutorial kind of a thing. So people don't feel like, oh, it's the meeting and I'm not going to be able to get on. And just to kind of maybe take away some of the fear.
Okay.
Mayor, can I address that last?
All right. Anybody else for good?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Can I just address that last comment?
Yes.
Not to belabor the point, but I just want to get.
Go right ahead.
I want to get the information out to the public. That's my only goal here. The posting that we put on social media, yes, there is a picture of an invitation. But above that, in the verbiage, there is a link for you to go to Zoom and register. So there is a live link there. That was a concern that was raised by Councilmember Hartman after the last meeting where it wasn't a live link. We've corrected that. And this for this meeting, there is a live link. If you click on the live link, it will take you to the location for you to register for it. So I just want that out there that if people, you know, if people see the social media posting, there is information there and there is a link for you to click on to go ahead and, uh, and register. We also, we also provide an email address where people can contact me specifically. And if they have any questions or concerns about how to go through the process, I will be more than happy to take the time to advise people on how to do that.
Okay. All right. Legal comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, not much, just real briefly, because you're all talking about it. I'll just chime in. Today, the governor issued a pretty lengthy report. Uh, 20, page 24 of the report speaks about governmental meetings. And it says, starting in phase two, governmental meetings shall be in person again, uh, subject to certain restrictions, which include no more than 50 persons may be in attendance at any meeting at any time. Social distancing guidelines and other safety protocols must be adhered to. And the general public who wishes to attend, but doesn't wish to be in person, still has the opportunity to attend via Zoom setting to participate in the meeting. So that will, uh, start at phase two tomorrow. Uh, tomorrow, Monday, everyone knows by now that phase one in Broward County has been instituted. That does not affect your meetings, but it does affect things like restaurants go to 50% capacity. Uh, barber shops, et cetera, are opening again under the phase of one guidelines in certain businesses as well. Other than that, Mayor, it's been nice and quiet. No further legal comments.
Okay. All right, great. Mr. Burns, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think we've talked about the executive order in phase one, so I'll let that go for now. I do want to address some of the public comments that were made earlier. Uh, I'll start with traffic on 188. Uh, we, we are certainly aware of that. I've had communications with, with multiple residents out of there, out there. And I've been working with Dave of PD, we've stepped up our presence in that area. And we, uh, we've had the speed trailer out there, so we're continuing to work on that. We have added that to our list of hotspots. We don't wait for residents to complain to us. We are aware of hotspots and we do work to address it. That was actually exactly the plan that, uh, Councilmember Jablonski had came up with, that we've been working. So we, we have been working on enhanced enforcement around town. And, and we will continue to do that. And I think the, the coronavirus has slowed some of those efforts, unfortunately. Uh, but, but we will, we will certainly resume that. We communicate with AVPD on a regular basis from the officers on the street to the highest administration. So I actually feel very good about our awareness of where the hotspots are and our ability to try to address that and that communication. So we'll continue to do that. Uh, on Frontier Trails and FPNL, uh, we weren't, FPNL is normally supposed to provide notice in advance to residents. They're supposed to provide notice in advance to the town. When we get that, we can share that with residents. If we don't get it, we can't share it. So we became aware of that when FPNL was out onsite. Uh, Russell and I immediately jumped on it with contacts at FPNL and we were able to address it. And in some cases severely curtail, uh, some of the excess trimming that they were looking to do. So, uh, we're happy to communicate with our residents. We will always continue to look for the opportunities to do that and to expand that communication. And we're always willing to listen. We're always willing to try to, try to expand that. But there are times where we, we can't communicate what, what we don't know. Uh, sometimes we do find about it, find out about it after the fact. And, and we will work to address it as promptly and as thoroughly as we certainly can. Uh, I think that's, I think that's it, Mayor. I think I'm, I'm good for this evening.
Okay. All right. Uh, Russell, you would read number eight.
Okay, Mayor. Number eight is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the transportation surface drainage and ongoing rehabilitation project to Broward County as a municipal rehabilitation and maintenance surtax project to be considered for cycle one funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Need a motion in a second.
Second?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Yeah, Russell, I mean, Andy, go ahead.
The audio is very bad.
Andy's muted.
This is the item that was on the agenda at our last, yeah. Yeah, this is the item that was on the agenda for our last council meeting three weeks ago that was withdrawn because the county wanted to do some additional homework. It's back before you completely unchanged from the last council meeting. And this is, uh, the staff is making an effort via the penny surtax to obtain next year's Tisdor funding via the surtax instead of from our residents. So your motion, your consent to this agenda tonight just expresses the council's support of our pursuing that with, uh, with the NPO and with Broward County.
Okay. See, is there any public comment on this issue?
Mayor, it looks like I have one participant that wishes to speak. Mrs. Glass, Sharon Glass. Ms. Glass, did you want to speak to this issue?
Her microphone is muted.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if I can unmute it.
Oh.
There you go.
You can do that?
Yeah.
Ms. Glass, did you want to speak to this issue?
Not this issue. I believe there's a delay in the feed.
I'm sorry, we're having some trouble hearing.
Not hearing you, you're breaking up.
Not on this issue. I believe there may be a delay in the feed.
No, we can, we can hear you now. It could be an issue with the internet connection that you have, but we can hear you now.
I previously had raised my hand in the beginning referring to the technology.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any additional comments from anyone or a public comment for this matter?
Excuse me, which is sort of a moot point now that we are not going to virtually meet any law. But I think whoever set this up did a good job because I am not tech savvy. And at the very last minute, I decided to come on and join. And I managed to copy and paste and I'm here.
There you go.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Glass. Thank you. All right. I don't see any other participants, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, back to the council. Any additional comments or questions?
Yeah, I do have a question about this. Um, Andy or Russell or Rod, I'm not sure who the best person answers. So I'll, I'll direct it to you, Andy. I know where we're going after one year's worth of funding for Tisdor here. Um, is it possible to go for more than one year? I mean, or do we have to apply this year for next year, next year for the year after? Okay, Rod. Rod's nodding his head. Okay. Good. Rod, you're on mute just by the way, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I wanted to let you finish.
Okay. All right. No, that's, that was the question. Thank you.
Well, yeah, just to clarify, we've submitted for two separate applications for two Tisdor years. So those are the ones that we had construction ready. So those are the ones that we applied for.
So we can't do a three-year or a five-year program or something like that?
No, this was for cycle one shovel-ready projects. So those are the ones that we had ready at the time.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question for Rod, as long as you're out, Rod. When, when would we know if we get this accepted or not? Would you know that?
They're, they're constantly shifting the times back because of all the stuff that's going on. So I think it's in June now. So sometime in June is, is when they're supposed to. Um, I think May 4th was, I'm sorry?
Next month? Next year?
Yeah, yes, in June. Next month. So we have two separate surtax issues. This one before you now is the R and M section of it. So we're anticipating sometime in June to hear from them.
Good. Hopefully we.
So Marty, when's our last time? If, if they keep pushing, I'm sorry, Gary, were you finished? I guess not.
I'm done. I'm always done. Go ahead, Bob.
How, how late do you have to have the decision, Marty? Before, oh, I'm assuming that if we get this money from the county, we're not going to, uh, have our annual special assessment like we've been doing?
Well, will that be having, can you, everyone here, okay?
No, I can't hear Marty.
Very difficult to hear.
The, the way we're going to do it is the Tisdor capo project will outline all the projects and it'll be as part of the budget process to be decided in July. So we'll have a window. But we don't expect to receive approval for these projects until late, right, Rod? Uh, late, uh, in, in September at best.
So then we'll have to tax as we normally do. And then what for this year?
What happened?
A decision will be made as part of the process on whether we're going to fund Tisdor. Uh, right now, that'll be a discussion as part of the budget process, whether we're going to have.
Marty, Marty, let me stop you. We do expect an answer long before September.
Okay. So, all right. That's what I needed to know. So we'll know before it needs to be on the trip notices and we'll be able to let Marty Kier's office know everything they need to know. We should have our answers in advance.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Amundson?
You're on mute.
Yes.
She's on mute.
Just for the record, I got to take her off some. Councilmember?
Um, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Number nine, please.
Item nine is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the selection of EDJ Service LLC as the lowest price, most responsive and responsible proposer for town-wide right-of-way maintenance services agreement, approving an agreement with EDJ Service LLC, which establishes the scope and compensation for its services to provide town-wide right-of-way maintenance services to the town, approving a fiscal year 2019, 2020 budgetary appropriation expense not to exceed $14,190 for the prorated contractual increase, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter?
Let me check, Mayor. I don't see any hands raised on this issue, Mayor.
All right. Any additional public comment from the council?
I have a question or two.
Okay.
So December, um, I read through, I read the scoring. I read the scoring system. Obviously, uh, um, you know, they're ranked in, in the order that, uh, of their scores. Um, our top scoring responsive dot, dot, dot vendor EDJ Services achieved 278, which is the highest score. Is there anything in the points you didn't give them that I guess there's still 22 points on the table that you didn't give them because there was some discrepancy that was significant or, or something that would concern you? I know it would probably be spread across a number of categories. But were there any issues with this particular vendor?
Councilmember Hartman, is this a question for me? My, my internet went in and out, but I heard your question. So thank you for asking. Uh, the committee worked together. So the results of scoring looked remarkably different between committee members. But this was the scoring that was the, you know, the, the committee members came to an agreement based upon who had the highest score. So I particularly didn't rank this particular vendor higher or lower necessarily due to anything, you know, scary. I know the, the company and I don't, I don't have a problem with them. Um, other vendors knew them better or they felt better about what they read. Or I'm sorry, not vendors, but other, other committee members felt better about what they read. So they scored them higher and somebody else lower, whatever. It's just sort of subjective, although we try to be very sensitive.
December, December, stop for a moment, please. Councilmember Hartman, look, I want to address this. This was done, it, the normal procurement process for us in every other municipality. We go out to bid, the bids come back in from, from responsive bidders. That is then taken and given, it's assigned to a selection committee. This was not December who went through and evaluated. It was a commit, a three-person committee went through this and arrived at a full evaluation of the references, the material submitted and everything else and came to a collective decision. So it's the decision that came out of the selection committee that's before you tonight. December is the contact person and the contract administrator. But there was a committee that evaluated this. This was not just her that evaluated this.
So let me rephrase then, because I didn't mean to put you on the spot, December. I just think in terms of this contract, was there anything that jumped off the page about this particular vendor? They didn't get a perfect score. Was there anything that led to concerns with the selection committee with this? But I don't want to hire somebody where there was a, there was a gap that, you know, the average scores of the teams doesn't indicate. So I just want to make sure we're comfortable moving forward with this particular vendor based on our processes and, and the feedback that they provide us to win the contract. Andy?
In, in this case, we are very, we're, staff is very comfortable advancing this recommendation. Uh, it's rare that anybody gets a perfect score on any selection committee that I've ever participated in. So, uh, I wouldn't really view that as points left on the table. So from that standpoint, I, I'm very comfortable with this based on, uh, the vendor's history, uh, other people that they've worked with, references that we've been able to check. From my standpoint, I expect that, that the transition will be seamless to the public. If anything else, I hope service levels increase a little bit because when you have a new vendor, they want to come out and they want to make sure they impress you.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions from anyone? Seeing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder? Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor McKay? Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 10, please.
Yep. Item 10. Item 10 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the selection of Budget Sprinkler Repair LLC as the lowest-priced, most responsive and responsible proposer for town-wide irrigation maintenance and repair services, approving an agreement with Budget Sprinkler Repair LLC, which establishes the scope and compensation for its services to provide town-wide irrigation maintenance services to the town, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter?
Mayor, I don't see any hands raised for this item either.
Okay. Back to the council. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Seeing none? Call the question.
See a price reduction?
Yes.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Number 11, please.
Item number 11 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the selection of EDJ Service LLC as the lowest-priced, most responsive and responsible proposer for town-wide parks and property maintenance services, approving an agreement with EDJ Service LLC, which establishes the scope and compensation for its services to provide town-wide parks and property maintenance services to the town, approving a fiscal year 2019, 2020 budgetary appropriation from the general fund, approving an additional expense not to exceed $5,700 and zero cents for the prorated contractual increase, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter?
Mayor, I also don't, I don't see any hands raised for this item either.
Okay. Any additional council member comments or questions? Seeing none, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Number 12.
Item 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the selection of Reliance Contractors as the lowest, most responsive and responsible proposer for town-wide facilities maintenance services, approving an agreement with Reliance Contractors, which establishes the scope and compensation for its services to provide town-wide facilities maintenance services to the town, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Need a second. Bob made the motion. Do you want to make the second?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment? Any public comment on this matter?
Mayor, I don't see any hands raised for this item either.
Okay. Councilmember, have any additional questions or comments?
I do. I do. I, I, I want to know, uh, and probably Andy can answer it. Uh, why was there no other bidding on this? Did we think about putting it back out again? Or he's the only company in town?
This is the second time we bid this. We bid this five years ago. We did our best to promote it at that time. Uh, Reliance was the only respondent at that time. And so we awarded the contract to them. Five years later, we're at the end of the contract. We went back out to bid on it again. They were once again the only respondent. And I, I don't take that as a, a lack of promotion on our part. And the reason I say that is the other items that you voted on tonight all went out at the same time. And they all got back a multitude of responses for you to consider. It, it may be this is just a niche service that there just aren't a lot of players out there for whatever reason. But we did everything that we could to promote it. Uh, quite honestly, I'm very surprised that we only got one response back. But that's, uh, that's where we find ourselves this evening.
Uh, I'm, I'm also very surprised.
I don't know that we.
What? Hello?
Yeah.
Could I lose you guys?
Can hear you. Hear you.
Can you hear me?
So we can hear you.
Go ahead, Gary.
Oh, okay. We, we, sorry. I thought you were done. Um, this deals with facility maintenance. This deals with all the restrooms and the parks and, and the playground, uh, stuff. Is that correct, Andy? Okay. Excuse me.
Yes. It's opening and closing those facilities, cleaning the restrooms, et cetera, checking, uh, the grounds. Yes.
Right. Here's my question, and it just occurred to me because I just got 184-page document a few hours ago on how I've, my customers have to wear a hazmat suit and so do I to serve them. And, uh, no, no kidding aside, um, excuse me. And my question is, in this moving environment we have with the COVID-19, um, as things may change in the facilities maintenance, are we, is that handled under this contract? Uh, sanitation-wise or things of that nature? Is there anything that's going to work with that? Maybe I'm not phrasing the question correctly, but there's, uh, it's a work in progress.
No, I understand what you're saying. The same conditions are a little bit different, circumstances are different. And for example, we've made changes with our vendor that, that services town hall and how things are sanitized and cleaned. Uh, I can let December think of that, uh, as to what the plans are for those park facilities.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, my internet kind of goes in and out a little bit. Uh, but having an answer to your question, Bob, is that our contract has always anticipated utilization of the, this contractor's services for emergency purposes. And they have helped us in events of hurricanes and such. They are also extremely well-placed in the national and even international facilities maintenance for governmental authorities and public parks, state parks and national parks. So, uh, they have a lot of experience in government work in the requirements of the FEMA forms. And I think they're well-prepared to handle and even advise on, on what other organizations are doing. So I feel very confident with this vendor.
Good. Thank you.
So I just have one quick question on this. I note, I'm sorry, Gary, if I cut you off, I thought you were done.
No, no, no.
You're good.
Um.
Okay. Okay. I, I noticed that we pay for cleaning supplies, toilet paper, all that sort of thing that makes sense. If they're going to be required to wear hazmat suits, things like that, as Gary was mentioning, is that something the town would have to furnish? Is that something that we haven't even really investigated yet? Has the contract covered it? Maybe Keith, you've, you've got an answer or Andy?
No, but go ahead, December.
Oh, I just will tell you that as a matter of course, we do supply gloves and, you know, masks for just the regular, um, cleaning activities that require such personal protective equipment. Um, and I don't know if there would be another requirement, but it's not within the contract. Um, it would be my guess that we would supply what we would require for them to use, unless they were willing to supply it themselves.
Okay.
December, can I cut in? Can you hear me? These contracts, Vanessa, shake your head, yes or no, they are two CFR 200 compliant. And with that in mind, Keith's aware that this would be eligible for reimbursement for FEMA under, now I'm not sure about this contract, Vanessa, but if there are extraordinary expenses that we would have to expend, we could get reimbursement for them.
Okay.
Good.
Quick question. Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Why would, why would we not consider bringing somebody on town staff to, to handle all this, like a maintenance-type person? You know, it's not like we're paying, you know, $10,000 a year. This is quite a large sum of money. And if we had somebody that was on board with us, then we could use them wherever we, we needed them. So have we considered that? And if we have, if we haven't, why not?
I, I, I think that if, to answer your question, Vice Mayor, if it was a simple thing of, of performing these functions over the course of a day and we could hire somebody to do that, that might be something that's worth exploring, but the range of hours to perform this function, opening parks at sunrise, closing parks at sunset, doing it seven days a week, it's just not feasible for one person, e- even working a full-time week, to be able to do that and, and be that available. So that's the reason we subcontract this now.
But if you add up all the hours in a day that they're, you know, opening and closing a park, cleaning a bathroom, taking care of the garbage, cleaning up, you know, any debris that somebody might have left in the park. I mean, what are you talking, four or five hours a day? That's not an eight-hour-a-day job. There's no way that they're working eight straight hours.
No, I, I get what, I could interject.
Go ahead.
I, I get what Andy's, what Andy's saying because it's, it's, it's a small amount of hours. However, it's seven days a week, 365, and you need multiple, it's more than one person because you have vacations, people getting sick, things of that nature. You need a company or a group of people to, to handle that. I know we contract services like this in the restaurants, and I have, you know, 30, 40, or you stab 30, 40 employees, you know, to take care of it. So it's, it's over multiple time periods and, you know, there's 52 weeks in a year. I think that really is more the answer as opposed to what the task is. Anyway, I'm done.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Call the question. Well, Russell?
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, approval of minutes.
Just, just a comment while we were voting, I just took the contract amount and divided it by the number of days a year, and it cost us 174 a day. So, and that's for both parks and bathrooms, so. Three parks and bathrooms.
It should be three parks, yeah.
Three parks and bathrooms, yeah, for the bathrooms and the two that are locked up. Okay, just for context.
December, go ahead.
December's saying five parks.
Five parks.
Have bathrooms?
Five parks.
Five parks, and not all bathrooms, though.
No. No, but there are trash receptacles to be emptied and, you know.
Okay.
I mean, the locations have grown.
Okay.
So that's 34 bucks a park per day.
It went down exponentially. There you go.
On the way to scale.
Okay, approval of minutes for.
Make a motion to approve both minutes, both meetings.
Second, second.
Okay. Any public comments? Because we've been corrected before.
There's a hand up.
There is a hand up.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
David Kozinski wishes to speak. David, you have a floor for two minutes.
Hi, Council. David Kozinski, 6411 Holliday Trail. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. All right, thanks. Thank you. On the 23rd, the minutes for the April 23rd meeting, I, during the comment portion, I submitted to Russell, and during that public comment, I specifically said I was submitting written comments and specifically regarding my comments from the April 9th meeting when I spoke with Mr. Kalis about the berm on his property, and I specifically mentioned that that was the limit of my comments. And I submitted my written comments pursuant to the rules, and they're not listed here.
We can, Mayor, we can amend the minutes to reflect that the written comments were turned in by Mr. Kozinski if you would like to have an amended motion to reflect the amended minutes for the 23rd.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion.
Okay. Somebody second the amendment.
I think Councilmember Hartman.
You know, yep, I, I guess I accept the, I accept the amended motion and continue to second it.
Good. All right. Anything else additional? Is there anyone else coming?
Is this something that we normally do, put stuff like that in the minutes? I thought we had a guideline that you set up for us, Russell?
It's whatever council's pleasure is, if, if you want me to amend those minutes to reflect that. I mean, we have received, we have received exhibits and, and the like in the past from, from the public making comments, so. Whatever council's pleasure is.
We usually try to correct them, so. I mean, unless they're disputed, it doesn't sound like they're.
Did anybody see the re, what he wrote?
I didn't.
Or the matter? I mean, I don't know.
I have those comments should be with the backup for that meeting. I can certainly distribute that to the council tomorrow.
Okay.
So then should we not approve that set of minutes? Leave it for next month? You make the revisions that are necessary, and then we vote on it then?
Certainly.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll withdraw my motion for that meeting, and we'll get more up-to-date information.
Okay, so we're only approving one set of minutes?
Right.
Right.
Okay, which date is that?
April 9.
April 9.
Okay. All right. So call the question.
Okay, Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
This is a question for Keith, if I may. Keith, should we take a formal motion to table the, the minutes for April 23rd since they want to?
Unless the mayor just wants to withdraw it.
You withdraw that, too.
Okay, still you withdraw. Okay. Very good. That's it, Mayor. That's no, no more business to dispatch tonight.
All right. Anybody else want a last input or something to say before we sign off? Because we don't get to see much of each other.
Yes, it was very good to see you all, and I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Likewise, look forward to getting back together next month.
Stay safe, everybody.
Bye, guys. See you later.
Probably a phone call away.
Stay safe, everybody. Bye-bye.
All right.
Bye.
Yeah, stay safe. Bye-bye.